All right. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, March 14th, 2017, and we will start with roll call.
Don Francis?
Yes.
Barbara Doss has been excused. Tom Knoll has been excused. Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Amy Seeboth-Wilson?
Here.
And Catherine West- Westeby is just going to be a few minutes late.
All right. First item on our agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. First is council minutes from February 28th, 2017, both the special council meeting and also the regular council meeting. B is payment of bills. C is the financial report. D is appointments to boards and commissions. I have none this evening, but we do have a number of openings that will be coming up. Plan Commission, May 1st. We would need some volunteers to serve on the Plan Commission. And we also have one on the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as a few other boards and commissions. So if you are interested in serving, and we hope you are, please fill out an application. It's available online, and we will consider that. Licenses in our packet, one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. And two run permit requests, UWP Health and Human Performance Department, a 5K run on April 8th, and Southwest Health Nightingale's fundraiser 5K run on May 5th. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, I have a number of people who have asked to speak this evening, but it is on a topic that we're going to be discussing later, so I will ask for you to speak then. I have no other requests, otherwise just in general. In our packet, we have reports, board commission and committee minutes, tourism committee. I have nothing to add. Transit System Joint Committee, Doss is not here. Library Board, Westeby?
Nothing to add.
Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No addition.
Other reports in our packet include the city attorney itemized report, the water and sewer financial report, also the airport financial report, and finally, the department of progress reports. Any questions on any of those reports? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to our first action item, which is Resolution 1705, closing loopholes that shift a greater property tax burden from commercial to residential homeowners. It's known as the dark store legislation. Erin?
That was an excellent summary. This is a top legislative priority of the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, and as Eileen so aptly summarized, basically, they're seeking legislatively to close a loophole in the tax law that has allowed big-box retailers to argue that their property should be assessed as if it were a vacant store. And the concern around this has to do with fairness, both in terms of the value associated with the property. When the property is associated as if it were, or assessed as if it were a vacant store, then that causes a tax burden shift to residential properties and to other types of commercial entities and retailers. And so the League of Municipalities has asked their member cities to consider the attached resolution.
Any questions, anyone?
Yes, from last time. Are we going to be made aware of the progress of this as far as legislation?
Council members can sign up to get the League of Municipalities email blasts with respect to their work legislatively, so I can certainly get you the link again. That would enable you to get the information directly from the League of Municipalities. Otherwise, I try to provide some of that information in my weekly email updates as well. But the best and most timely source would be directly from the League.
I just don't want it to drop into a deep hole and not be seen again or heard again.
I just wanted to thank the city manager for bringing this to our attention. I think that it's crazy that big-box retailers are getting away with reducing their tax assessment as if they were vacant buildings. And I think it's a shame that that's happening, and I really hope our state joins other states to prevent it from happening.
I would agree with that, and you touched on the point that it has happened in other states, and it has happened already in Wisconsin, and so that is exactly why we're looking at this resolution and hoping that the law can be changed, or at least strengthened, so that that cannot happen. So is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution number 17...no, that's the wrong number.
1705.
1705. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 1706, Support of State of Wisconsin 2017-2019 Investment in UW Platteville.
And I'm going to ask Rose Smersky from UW Platteville, the Vice Chancellor of University Relations, to come up and lead her team in explaining a little bit of background on this issue.
Just for our purposes, would you give your name and address?
Sure. My name is Rose Smersky. I'm Vice Chancellor for University Relations at UW Platteville. And again, thank you. I have with me Dean Molly Gribb, who is the Dean of Engineering, Mathematics, and Science. I'm going to have her speak about the engineering building that we're asking support for. And I also have Les Hollingsworth, who is the Assistant Dean for Business, Industry, Life Science, and Agriculture, to talk about Babel Hall. So if you will...
Molly, do you want to come up?
We just want to say a few words in support of our two building projects.
Do you need my name and address, too? So Molly Gribb, 111...no, 1120 Colleen Court. I live here in Platteville.
For the last year and a half, and I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm always really quick, so you don't have to worry about that. I moved back to Wisconsin after a career really all over the country, and so I'm back in Wisconsin. I grew up just down the road in Mount Horeb, and I am delighted to be here and be the Dean of the College of Engineering, Mathematics, and Science. This is a great engineering program. It's a great university overall, and we're really excited about the opportunity perhaps to have a new engineering building. If you live in the community, you know that enrollment has increased a lot over the last several years, 40% in the Engineering, Math, and Science College alone since 2010. So we're in desperate need of new, modern facilities to train these young engineers, who, 75% of which will stay in the state of Wisconsin and contribute to communities like this one, like at Delta III among other places. So we thank you very much for your support, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
If you want, just explain a little bit about what you're looking to build, the engineering building itself?
So it's, it would be a new engineering building. It would have mechanical, civil, and general engineering in it. It's a $50, $5 million construction project. We're delighted about the jobs that that would provide for local industry as well. New, modern spaces. We're hoping as part of that to have a maker space that we could share with the community, somewhere for inventors and people who have ideas, to work with students to make them a reality.
In relation to Longhorn Drive and Southwest Road, where would the building be located?
So where the newest engineering building is, there's a parking lot right across the street. That's where the building would be located.
Oh, okay.
Right in the corner there.
On the right-hand side of Southwest Road, going toward Dubuque?
Yes. Yes, that's right.
Okay.
All right. Les, it's your turn.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Les Hollingsworth, Assistant Dean for the College of Business, Industry, Life Science, and Ag, colloquially known as BILSA. That's a huge word. 1027 Walnut Dell Road here in Platteville. Specifically, we're asking for the council's support on renovation of BILSA Hall, or Babel Hall, excuse me. I can't talk tonight. Babel Hall, which is essentially the life sciences building for the campus. And why we're asking for this is, across the country, we know that our population's growing quite a bit, and as that population grays, we need as many medical professionals, health professionals, as we can scrounge up. Our biology programs specifically builds medical professionals, or at least we train them hopefully to get into medical school. We have a RUSCH program, which is a program specifically designed to encourage students to serve rural areas in a healthcare capacity. It's called RUSCH, R-U-S-C-H. And so that's one of the niches that we fill. And this renovation for Babel allows us to update many of our facilities to be able to better serve those students and continue to prepare them for medical opportunities down the road.
All right. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, we just want to thank the council for considering a resolution in support of the university. This is part of a strong, or bigger advocacy campaign that we are endeavoring in. We have really engaged a lot of our alumni, our corporate connections that we have, understanding that this is a, these two projects that were just mentioned really were priorities for the UW system. Babel Hall has been a priority for the last two years prior to that, and again, it was number one renovation project for the UW system. And the new engineering building is the only new footprint that was offered within the system at a time when we're all very mindful of the bonding levels. This is a project based on the needs of the workforce that they put that on, the list that they put forward to the governor. So we appreciate this. We appreciate you considering it, and we hope we can count on your support.
Hasn't Babel Hall been partially renovated?
Yes, you are correct. We did back in 2000, it started in '08, and I was completing in 2010, the first floor of Babel Hall. This is to finally have second and third floor completed, so that we have this lovely, modern lab space that the students are able to utilize. We're hoping to have that now for the second and third floor, which are heavily used.
Any questions, anyone? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Resolution 1706, Support of State of Wisconsin Investment in UW Platteville. Is there a motion?
I'll make our motion for Resolution 1706, Support of State of Wisconsin 2017-2019 Investment in the University of Wisconsin Platteville.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All right, we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Those are the action items we have this evening. We're on to information and discussion. The first is Contract 117 for Elm Street Reconstruction. Howard?
Thank you. Staff in Delta III Engineering opened bids for this contract on March 3rd. There were seven bidders. We have the bid tabulation and Delta III's recommendation in the packet. And what this does is it will reconstruct Elm Street from Pine Street to Furnace Street in two phases. First phase will be the block from Pine Street to the north side of Main Street by the new library building. And we want that to be complete by June 2nd. And we have early completion eligibility, or bonus eligibility for that, for up to two weeks' worth of getting it done early. He will be eligible for an additional week if he completes the rest of the project prior to August 11th. If he does not complete the milestones, he may be responsible for liquidated damages. The city budgeted $750,000 for this project. The apparent low bidder is Owens Excavating from Hazel Green with a total bid of $467,703.50. There was an alternate bid to accept a better quality of material, select crush rock instead of break or run, and there was no difference in price for this. So what we're doing is we're recommending a ward of Contract 1-17 with alternate A for the contract price of $467,703.50. The Water and Sewer Commission approved their portion of the contract yesterday for $192,241. The city common council portion is $275,462.50.
Questions, anyone? Okay, if I don't, I don't hear any questions, so we'll go on to the next item. Thank you, Howard.
I'll ask a question.
All right, ask a question.
Why not? Howard, can you explain a little bit more about the legislative changes on January 1st that lowered the wage rate?
For many years, the state of Wisconsin had a requirement for having specific wage rates for their, for municipal projects. The Department of Workforce Development would identify the appropriate wages for each of the different trades that were involved, and so these folks would have to pay those rates. The law was changed, and as of January 1st of this year, wage rates are no longer required. Now they have to just follow standard federal minimum wage. So we believe that some of the savings that we found on here was due to the wage rates.
And that would be local employees that now may have less wages?
True. I mean, yeah.
Wondering. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, then we'll go on to the next one, Lead Service Line Grant Implementation Policy. Howard?
Okay. We've been working on this since late last summer. The state of Wisconsin has been able to figure out a way to get federal and state monies so that they can provide what they call principal forgiven loans, REIT grants, and for the replacement of lead water service lines on private property. Up until such, up until this time, those private, those lines on private property, the city could not use public funds for doing any of this work on private line, private side. We were awarded $310,000 grant, and what we've done is put together a potential policy for implementation so that we can dispense these funds. We have a work session scheduled after the council meeting to go through the proposed policy in more detail so that we could explain what our potential is. Last night, the Water and Sewer Commission met, and they made a recommendation regarding this, and we'll talk that over in more detail at the work session.
Okay. Discuss that later. Next item is the Outdoor Fitness Center. Is anybody on staff?
Yes, we have a, I'm standing in for Luke Peters tonight, who's vacationing with his family. And we have a proposal from a group of citizens that would like to put an outdoor fitness park as a, sort of an added amenity to the Roundtree Branch Trail. And so they, Gene Weber's here, and I think members of his team who can talk in more detail about the proposal. I would just note, there is a description, some notes that Gene had, and his group had provided, that talked about the city taking ownership of this facility once it's constructed. And it talks about there being a benefit with respect to our insurance coverage and vandalism. And it is correct that there is a benefit for the city to have ownership, but it's actually with respect to injury liability related to personal injury, because the state of Wisconsin has a liability cap for any public parks and recreation facility. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so we have obviously four gentlemen who would like to speak this evening, so I just, come on up. Probably saves time than me actually calling each of you up individually. So whoever wants to go first, just please give your name and your address, and then we do ask that you let me use those five minutes, or less. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll be brief. My name is Nathan Curry, and my address is 6894 Fawn Road. I am a member of the Outdoor Fitness Steering Committee, an attorney here in town. Got involved in this project because I think it would be an excellent addition to Platteville, one that would be a gift ultimately to Platteville and its citizens from the individuals and organizations that are involved, along with the private fundraising that we're doing. Our request from this, or for the city tonight would be for the donation of land about 200 yards south of the dog park just off the trail, and then ultimately the acceptance of that outdoor fitness center back to the city as a gift to cover, as was mentioned, the liability costs. To date, the amount of private funds that we've been able to raise for the project is $34,000, or over $34,000 of the $44,000 that we estimate needed for the project. We hope to have the fundraising for the project completed by the next month, and construction and implementation of this shortly thereafter. And I think Rob Saris is next on the list.
I'm Rob Saris. I live at 145 Moonlight Drive here in Platteville, and I'm part of the steering committee as well, just recently, and just excited to have another addition to the outdoor fitness that we have started here at Platteville. The trails have been beautiful through Platteville. I think the town is becoming just more lively, and the vitality of the community just getting involved is fantastic. As the high school health, physical education teacher and cross-country coach, we have, as the cross-country coach, anyway, provided, we're going to provide the ongoing maintenance of it. And so we've decided as a team, we take over that. Kiwanis and the Optimists will also take two months of the year, but we'll take the rest of the year, and we should be able to take care of any costs to the city as far as maintenance goes. So that's what the high school cross-country team is going to do, so, and thank you.
Hi, my name's Bob Hunthausen. My office address is 2 Insight Drive in Platteville. I'm a member of the Platteville Community Arboretum Board, and this has been a project that kind of originated out of processes there, and it's a, it's a very collaborative process. This is a partnership with Platteville Community Arboretum, Southwest Health, Kiwanis, Optimis, the school district, and also the UW Platteville Reclamation and Horticultural Club, who are going to provide natural grass plugs, which will grow from about three to eight feet high, that will provide a natural aesthetic border for the park itself. There's also been some additional funding from an anonymous donor for additional native plants for possible future border around the park, and also the path that would go from the trail itself to the, to the proposed fitness park. I'm also an avid user of the trail itself. I like to run down there after work, so, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Gene Weber, and I live at 1285 Union Street. One of the big questions about this trail, or about this fitness center, was would it be used? So we checked with three of the Platteville's benchmark cities, Monominee, where Stouts located, Whitewater, where obviously the University of Whitewater is located, and Monroe. And all three of those cities have a trailside fitness center like we're envisioning here for Platteville. They shared with us that they have 20 to 30 users per week, 1,000 to 1,200 per year. The Platteville School District was kind enough to survey all of their school district families, result, and that resulted in 67% of those families noting that one or more family members would use the trail at least once a week or once a month. Unlike our other benchmark cities, our PHS Health and FIAD instructors have committed to integrate the use of the fitness center into their class curriculums with a minimum of one class session on-site each fall and each spring, obviously designed to make students more aware of the fitness center and their use of it. In addition to that, Southwest Health has committed personal trainers who will train the trainers for the school district, as well as have a couple of public training sessions, like for senior citizens groups or other groups here in Platteville. And ironically, just within the last few days, we got contacted by Dr. Christine Fields from the University of Wisconsin Platteville with suggestions from students that the only thing missing from the trail in Platteville was an outdoor fitness center. That's the current plan we have, and we would appreciate your support. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I have a question. Your picture shows all young people. Do you have equipment here for older people?
In fact, this particular fitness facility, Ken, is designed for folks like you and me. It's age 13 and above, and that equipment is for those young athletes, but it also fits our lifestyle and healthy activity needs as well.
Some of this I might not be able to get up.
Go with a partner, Ken. That's the key.
Actually, Ken, if you could send me your email address, I could actually send you a website, and you'll see why you and I can use this well.
Well, the reason I asked the questions is all young people in this picture.
Well, you know...
No older ones.
That may just be the picture that happened to be on the website.
If a person cannot attend a training, is there a way that you just walk down to this fitness area and actually know how you're supposed to use this equipment?
Actually, yes, because one of the reasons we're looking at this specific system is that they have kiosks next to every workstation, and there would be five workstations here. And it describes on that kiosk how to use that equipment. In addition to that, for people with smartphones, you can actually bring up a video on YouTube that will actually demonstrate to you how to use the equipment. All we have to do is make sure we know how to use the smartphone to get to that. Any other questions? There you go. Bring my nine-year-old.
So first, I want to thank you guys. This is a very cool project, and I love that you take an initiative and are putting this together. It's super exciting. But my next question is a technical one. How did you decide on this location? Can you tell me the thought process you went through to determine that this was the best site for the activity center?
Yes. Yes. Originally, we came up with the idea that we need a outdoor fitness center along the trail that we have recently built. From that point, I got with a young personal trainer by the name of Ryan Sigurt from Southwest Health and Snap Fitness. And he was kind enough to design, provide us an original design. One of the challenges that I put in front of Ryan and Southwest Health was, take a look at the trail and advise us where you feel would be the best location for it. That was the original thought process. In addition to that, though, we have had many discussions with, actually with several organizations. And various people, as you would expect, had various places that they would like to see an outdoor fitness center. But as we talked through that with each group, we ended up back at the same place because it seems to make the most sense. And candidly, it will be another draw to bring outside visitors into Platteville to bike and walk our trail and make use of this fitness center, as well as hopefully make use of some of our retail businesses while they're here.
So one follow-up question on it, and maybe this is for staff. Is that, does it flood in that location or is it going to be above where? I know that some of that area gets wet.
That's a good question. And we did contact the city to make sure that was okay in that area. It might be more appropriate if I let Joel Carroll respond to that.
Cool.
Yeah, that location is within the plug plane. But the ordinance does allow outdoor activity-type structures that are non-havitable. So this would fall under that category. So it would not be a problem with the ordinance.
Is it high enough that, because I actually, I don't know exactly what we're talking about. I didn't go look at the site to measure it out. But some of that area gets really wet, right? Like marshy? Is it in, it's not in that part?
No.
It's above that? Okay.
Yeah. It would only be underwater in a very large flood event.
A hundred-year flood or something?
Yes. The normal day-to-day activities, it would be, you know, it's up high enough where it's not marshy as you're talking about.
Okay.
One other point to make is, just for everybody's benefit, the dog park is roughly halfway from the start of the trail, from the east and west ends of the trail, based on mile markers.
Thank you. Actually, looking at this, can you have another question? No. Looking at this photograph, is there going to be some kind of a surface put down or is it just?
There'll be a concrete base.
Concrete base? Okay.
We did also explore maybe putting some kind of a rubberized material over top of it. But we checked with the other cities that have put these in place and they chose not to have one. The additional clincher to that was, the cost was a mere additional $20,000, so we thought we'd pass.
But it could be added in the future if we ever decided we wanted to?
Yes, it could. Yes, it could. For this age group, I think we're okay with a concrete base. There are others of these, though, for 13 and under, that it might, if we were ever to pursue that kind of thing, that $20,000 investment may be more appropriate for some of those. However, all that said, if somebody's got $20,000 and they want to see that there, we'll be happy to include it.
I was the fundraiser. I have one more question about maintenance. Are you guys going to be developing a maintenance fund? I know you said you'll be doing maintenance, but when a piece of equipment breaks, or maybe in 15, 20 years, when it totally, if something falls apart, how, who will pay for that? How will that be paid for? Because it's different, maybe, that, I don't know if that's what you mean when you say maintenance.
Amy, that's a very good question. Obviously, we have, the leadership in this group is not an organization. It's the four individuals that you see here, plus Bev Johansson. What we're offering to put in place is something where we have a warranty that it is going to last 20 years or be replaced by the manufacturer. The exception to that is, is any of the plastic pieces, which are warranted for 15 years. Beyond that, there is no maintenance guarantee or total replacement planned. That would have to be something that the community might choose to take on at that time. Or worst-case scenario, it disappears. It has to be taken out.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting that, but I do want you to be fully aware, as you vote on this, what we're prepared to do and what we're not.
Thank you.
Any other? Yep, Don?
Gene, was lighting at all considered or is this something just for daylight hours?
Candidly, we never really gave much thought to lighting. Now, as you're aware, there is lights along the trail. So that may offer some lighting for people that may want to do this after dusk.
Early morning.
Or early morning. But the bottom line really is, if it isn't adequate, then it becomes a daylight outdoor fitness center. Anything else?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Might add, best of luck to UWP with the engineering building in Babel. We need it. Thank you.
All right. The next item is community garden and Karen has asked to comment a little bit on the report that we have in our packet.
Yes, in my continuing fill-in duties. When we looked closer at the packet, it appears as though, I think Luke sent in the description from a previous year, 2015. And my understanding is that actually, the program this year would model last year or 2016. We do have Jack Ledke here and he has been involved with some of the details. And if you have any specific questions, he may be able to answer them. Otherwise, Luke will be back at our next meeting. And Gary Munson.
Had to bring backup with me. My name is Jack Ledke. I'm the Executive Director for the Platteville Main Street Program. And before we talk about this, I would just like to compliment Gene and his crew of merry men who have left already. It's lucky, Platteville is lucky to have that type of involvement from people who live here, that they are willing to step up and do projects like this. And in a time when the city is very tight for money in all areas, and they're not asking for anything, they're willing to give it back to the city, I think that's great for them. So, kudos to that group. Gary Munson is with me tonight because Gary is really, I should say, the motor behind our Sustainability Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Main Street Program. And they are dealing with the community gardens this year. And so I'd like Gary to take over and answer any questions you may have or explain briefly what we are proposing to do if the council agrees this year.
Thanks, Jack. I'm Gary Munson, 315 Case Street. And I've been privileged to be with the Sustainability Committee for the last three years. And we've done several projects. And one of the projects we're doing is the community garden. This will be the third year for the community garden. It's a site, it's in the vacant lot, city lot, next to, across the street from Jenner Towers on Mineral Street, next to Jenner Park. It's an ideal location for the gardens because it has water available there, there's plenty of sunshine, and lots and lots of room. Plus, it's within walking distance of probably hundreds of people. And so it's a wonderful spot. And so what we'd like to do, we've had four sites the last two years, we'd like to move two sites away from the walnut trees, because nothing's growing there, that's for one thing. And there's room for that. And then add four more sites. And what we're doing is, we're promoting, we're just encouraging people to get down there and do it. Every person in Jenner Towers, no one from Jenner Towers had a garden there, but everyone could tell you what was going on in that garden last summer. Who was picking, who was visiting, who was snooping, and a little sampling going on, too. But we want to promote with, to get more people involved. One of the things that we did last year as a Sustainability Committee was, we had a straw bale garden demonstration site. So we're using it as a community education site, too. This year, we're hoping to do a pollinator garden and also promote that and just to explain to people the importance of pollination. But one of the really neat ideas that came forward was to have a buddy program. And we're talking to the Seres Fraternity on March 27th to get some of the people from that fraternity involved, some of the people that are going to be here in the summer, to buddy with a senior to have a garden plot. I thought that was a wonderful idea. The community garden thing, it's a little bit of gardening and a lot of community. There's just some wonderful things happen when you've got gardens. People are together, they're sharing ideas. And that's what we're hoping to promote with this. So what we're hoping to do with the city, expand from four plots to eight, and there's plenty of room. And also, we want, one of the things that's limiting us is access to tools. People can't drag tools and things to the site. So we want to get one of those little plastic, Rubbermaid garden shed kinds of things and put that just kind of off the grassy area, so we'd have access to some tools. Everything we're doing down there is portable. The frames we have around the sites can be removed easily, the little shed, if we bring that thing in there, easy to take out. So if we can't continue with the garden, everything can be easily removed. So, any questions?
Do you have a lease or arrangement?
We do. And what we do is, we have been charging $30 a season. And at the end of this, and when the garden's cleaned at the end of October, the person gets $25 back. $5 goes to the city for the use of the water. And what we're doing, the first two years, we were working with the city and running it through the city finance and through the parks. I think Luke was handling it. This year, we're hoping to do it through the Main Street Program to make it a little easier to work with. And then just pay the city the $5 for the water, $5 per plot.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just add that I went by it a bunch last summer. It looks awesome. And I know that some of the students I work with at the university are very excited about it. So thank you for continuing to organize this, Gary.
You're welcome.
School project.
Good.
Thank you for continuing to organize and also grow. That's great. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. This is another one of the citizens of Platteville who is a machine. And when he has something on his mind, he gets it done, like the recycling program, the efforts that were done at Dairy Days the last two years. That's Gary Munson. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is local historic designation of 4155 South Oak Street.
Okay, so the property at 4155 South Oak Street, it's one of the city-owned parcels that we acquired as part of the Pioneer Ford Site redevelopment. This is back on the agenda. We've talked about this property recently. But it's back on the agenda because the Historic Preservation Commission voted at their last meeting to recommend approval of the site as a local historic site. So this is a provision under Chapter 27 of our municipal code. So as a local historic site, it would fall under a local jurisdiction, which means Historic Preservation Commission and the council. So if approved, any exterior changes to the property or the structure on the property would have to be approved. Generally, that would go through the Historic Preservation Commission, just like any properties in the downtown historic district. So any of that would have to be approved, and that would include building demolition. So that would be a direct conflict with the previous vote that the council had made, because that building, as part of the planning and development approval and the development agreement, the council has approved removing that building to allow parking for that redevelopment on that adjacent property. But at this point, the commission has the authority to make a recommendation. It's the council that has the final say, which is why it's before you. One odd or unusual compared to your normal votes, instead of a majority required vote for a designation, it has to be a three-quarters vote of the members of the council. So that would be six votes that would be needed for approval. So that's a little different than what we usually have. So there's additional information that the commission had used to make their determination your packet. And there would be some people here that will go through that. But that will be on your agenda for your next meeting. Any questions?
All right. We do have a number of people who have asked to speak. I will note first, we have one person who's registered in favor of saving the building, Bill Kramer. The other, he has not asked to speak. The other individuals who have asked to speak, if you could limit yourself to five minutes, and if somebody has already given us some information, you can repeat it if you'd like. I guess the first one is Frank Evans. If you could come up to the microphone, Frank.
Could I go later and ask? Can I ask? I am supposed to get one to bring up.
Okay, so you want someone else to speak first? Is that what you're saying? Okay. All right. So then we've got Jesse Killian.
I live at 715 South Court Street. I've sat here this evening and I've listened to various speakers come up and talk about people who are adding to Platteville, adding things as far as facilities or what they've done to promote our city. But I'd like to turn your memory back a few years, about 150 years in fact, to a man who came to Platteville in 1834, lived here until 1895, and was very influential in this city. His name was Samuel Moore. You know his home as the Gates Hotel. But Mr. Moore was much more than his hotel. He was just a very prominent citizen in the community. He lived here at the same time that Major Roundtree did. And one of the outstanding things that I would consider a tremendous addition to this city, besides being a blacksmith and having a business, a mercantile business, and being such an influential citizen in the city, he was the person, along with Hamner Robbins, who brought the railroad to town. Now, that was something very big in that time. If any of you have ever lived in a community or near a community that was a glowing, growing community, but then the railroad passed it by, you know what happened to communities like that. I was raised in Iowa County. And at one time, there was a little community called Helena. It was down near the Wisconsin River. It was a booming town. But guess what? The iron horse, as the Native Americans called it, did not come through there. It went to Sprigreen instead. All of you know where Sprigreen is, don't you? But you've never heard of Helena. So let's remember that we need to be thankful for Mr. Moore for doing what he did for Platteville and not just subtract his building from our city for a dollar. I find that very tragic. The other thing I'd like to mention is, for 16 years, I worked with Southwest Tech. I was employed to do their charter bus tours. These were educational and interesting trips that we took by charter bus to various places in Wisconsin, Illinois, Minnesota, Iowa, around this area. And they were day trips. And one of the things that my job entailed was to contact the city, make arrangements for the tour, do the guide, and make sure that everyone had a very interesting trip. One of the things that we frequently did was to visit places where history was important in their city, and they were proud of it. And you can think of how, what is happening to Galena, to Potose, to Mineral Point, to Dubuque. Look at some of the cities around here and what they've done with their historic buildings and their history. They aren't taking it down, building by building. They're restoring it, and that's bringing tourism to the town. So think about this, when you start subtracting from our history. Think about other cities that have really made good use of their historic buildings and their history. And that's what I'd like to see Platteville do more of. Thank you.
All right. Crystal.
I'm Crystal Perhaska and I live at 280 Division. I'm Crystal Perhaska, and I live at 280 Division. Unknowingly, mine kind of tied in with Jesse's. I have a copy here of the Julian's Journal, and if you're unfamiliar with the magazine, it's a monthly regional feature magazine about Dubuque and the tri-state region. Its mission, according to their website, is to promote community, its institutions, and its people, and it's been published since 1976. The copy that I have is the third edition in an installment of a discussion on their community's smart growth. Have you noticed the title of the magazine is Historic Preservation is Smart Growth. This is not a normal preservation magazine. In addition, they dedicated most of the articles to the discussion about historic preservation. One article discusses the city sponsoring a downtown planning group, which was initiated by the Community Housing Summit Action Conference. Out of these meetings came what became an annual seminar concerning historic preservation initiatives dealing with affordable housing in their upper-level residential, lower-level commercial use of existing, often historically significant, buildings in their downtown areas. I found this rather interesting. Working together on this, they brought a unique partnership of the Center for Dubuque History, the City of the Dubuque Historic Preservation Commission, the Dubuque County Historical Society, the State Historical Society, the City of Dubuque Housing Services, the Dubuque Board of Realtors, the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Dubuque Main Street Program. Their long-range planning commissioners stated, and I quote, "We have learned through this that the process of community engagement is a powerful engine. The broader community deserves an opportunity to help determine what kind of downtown we have," end of quote. In another article in this very issue, "An investment in our past brings dividends to our future," they discuss why some communities have significant tourism while others do not, much like Jesse mentioned with Galena, Mineral Point. Many that have tourism as an economic base find readaptive uses for their old buildings. It discusses Galena versus Dubuque. Yes, Dubuque prospered and progressed, but it did so at a price. In conclusion, the article discusses that cities must find ways to mix the old with the new, but this requires a willingness on parts of all sectors to make an investment." Another quote, to quote the article, "All citizens of our community must focus away from reasonable rates of return and instead talk about investment returns of the type strictly not measured by dollars and cents. Investment in a community's heritage, investment in goodwill produced, investment in community pride, and investment in good stewardship of our city's historic and architectural resources." He ends by saying, "When an old building crumbles to the ground, a piece of our cultural fabric is lost forever." In closing, I would like to say that the Bolt project is a unique project in that this chosen city developer can build the housing project as planned, as well as redo the other old Ford garage structure into a retail space. We can have new development and history at the same time if you allow the Gates Hotel to stand. This should be a win-win situation for all, not to mention that the Gates Hotel would stay on the tax rolls. Thank you.
All right. We have Becky Moots and Frank Evans. So Becky, you want to speak next?
Hi, my name is Becky Moots. I live at 215 South Iowa Street in Shelsburg, but my office address here in town is 330 South Waters Street. Plattville's always been kind of a home base for me, no matter where I've lived. So I don't live here, but it is kind of my home. And I would like to voice my opinion in support of saving the Gates Hotel. It is my understanding that the developer doesn't have strong feelings about the building and that the notion of tearing it down came from the city. And so I think that the developer's, unnecessarily wishes, but the developer's opinions should be considered here. It's also my understanding that there is a contractor who, with considerable restoration and preservation experience, is interested in pursuing, taking on the project. You know, obviously, he's not committed to anything without having seen the inside, you know. He hasn't committed to it, but he's interested in taking a look at that. And that's half the battle when you've got a historic property. I have seen comments like, oh, if somebody wanted to save it, they should have bought it earlier or when it was up for sale. I understand that thinking, but there's so many variables in play there, and hindsight is 20/20. I think there are so many people that if they had known that things were going to come to this, they would have bought it years ago in a heartbeat. But we don't know what's going to be done in the future. And when it was up for sale, maybe there was no one in a position to buy it then. But I'm afraid that if we don't save the building now, the whole city will regret it in the future. Another point I had is, until recently, I had never even heard of Samuel Moore, his contributions to early Plattville, or the ties that he had to other notable founders of the city. He was very significant to the city and to the region. And to have such a great example, a remnant of his legacy still standing is amazing. A simple plaque in the area can't come close to having the same impact as standing in or in front of an actual building where so much of our history has happened. I also believe that the only reason the Gates Hotel isn't already included in a historic district is because it was not contiguous with the rest of the Main Street, being separated by only one building. And I think that should count for something, that it is a technicality, that it was just one building away from being able to be part of the Main Street Historic District when that was designated. The bottom line that I'm trying to get at is I don't believe that any of us who want to save the Gates Hotel are against the rest of the development in general. We just feel that if we can all work together, the development can be a success, and we can save an important piece of our history. There doesn't have to be a loser here. I believe everyone involved can win. If keeping the building was the only thing standing in the way of a hospital, that there was no other location for, or something equally important to public safety, it would be a different issue, but this isn't. It's not a public safety issue. It's a slight inconvenience to a housing project. And I don't feel that gaining the 10 to 15 aroundabout spots can compare to preserving this piece of our history that probably many people have overlooked because it's not right on Main Street. So it is easy to miss. And I believe that parking is an issue in this town, but we need a more comprehensive solution to the parking issue. I don't think that not having these spots, if the building were to be demolished and parking spots put there, I don't think that's going to make or break the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Gary Perhaska and Frank Evans. Gary, you have registered twice. Do you want to speak at this?
Yeah, one is on the hotel. One is on general information.
Okay.
I had expected Joe to kind of go over some of this that's in your packet. I know you've received it, but I just wanted to clarify that there was some information, and I didn't really copy off the packet. So on, in your packet, you've got the Architectural History Inventory. And I got a clarification from the state today, and I asked them how that inventory was set up as to the determination of why that survey's there. And they say that's to show what structures are probably eligible for being put on the registry. And the reason for applying formally is the building can go through changes before or after the survey. So in other words, things can happen to that building that now no longer allows it to be in the survey. So that's why there's a formal application, too. And they said, that letter of determination now that you sent down, that initially says that it's eligible for the tax credits. And they said, yes, but to receive the tax credits in the process, you have to apply formally. So in other words, everything that happens, including getting registry status on that building, will fall under the tax credits. In other words, they determined it is historic, both state and nationally. The problem is, is in the financial incentive to come back. So in other words, that's been determined. So when you go through your packet, I know you've got some history stuff on Samuel Moore, and you've got the survey, and you have the letter, I'm sure, and you have some lithos, which I'm sure you have, some maps showing changes over a time period. And I won't bore you with that, because I know you probably read it, or I'm hoping you'll read it. That survey that came out in the letter of determination, I went over that, and that shows that, yes, it is eligible for registry status, it's just the formality of processing it. And of course, that goes by a number of procedures. You can't jump, because there's so many of them coming in at the national level. That's why the time period. But construction can start immediately on that. So in other words, the tax credits are available tomorrow if a person wants to restore that The thing on this is that with the Chapter 27, the Preservation Commission has been reviewing this process to determine if it's historic or not for quite some time. And the process did not move completely forward, and the reason was that building was still going to be standing. And the only time that it changed, I looked through some of the April stuff and all the way up through, and that building was in the plans. It was going to be retained. As long as it's retained, that's one thing. A standalone building, if you'll take a look at all the stuff that's designated historic in Plattville, there's very little local designation, and that's when a homeowner came forward and had it designated. If you'll take a look, it's the way the districts are combined. And of course, the last speaker that talked about the district and stuff, it wasn't contiguous. That's why it wasn't in. It wasn't that it wasn't eligible to be historic, but it wasn't following into the district boundaries. That's the only reason. And it wasn't pursued because it was under private control. If a private person, citizen came forward, it could be designated. But when you go through all that paperwork, Samuel Moore, I won't grab anybody else's fire, because they've covered a lot of it. The railroad came in. He was a businessman. He was an original founder of Plattville. He never left Plattville. Jesse had talked about the railroad. That was a huge thing. Major Roundtree tried to bring it in in 1848, and it failed. If it wasn't for two men in this city, it wouldn't have happened. And Samuel Moore funded it. Well, the paperwork that I found says that he funded it the first six years, and then it was sold. So I mean, this building is one of four commercial historic structures. I was down in Dubuque and talked with a person down there, and it came up that this is considered frontier architecture. It's early, early architecture that happened in this surrounding area. You're talking Dubuque, you're talking Galena, you're talking Shelsburg, Mineral Point. Plattville, the only reason that the buildings went down and it's so significantly changed from, let's say, Mineral Point, is because of the zinc mining and what happened here. That is the only reason. So the demolition of our downtown happened between 1890 and 1930. A massive amount of money poured into this community, and it leveled structures. It was much bigger structures, new materials, a lot of concrete's used. If you'll take a look at that, there's very few brick buildings, they're concrete. Precast concrete, concrete blocks, so on and so forth. So when you take a look at the community, that's why it changed. And this is one of only four structures left in the community commercially viable to that time period. So I mean, it wasn't just Samuel Moore, it was the time period and what happened in Plattville. And that's the significant essence of this whole thing, is this building shows an essence of what was way in the past and the development of this community. So in other words, it compounds not just the history of Samuel Moore, but the entire community as how it developed. And that's the biggest concern. So in other words, the Preservation Commission, of course, did move on this. I don't know if they'll have the votes to get it to be determined historic, but I think you really seriously should consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Evans.
I live at 150 Roundtree Avenue in a historic house. So I know a little something about historic preservation and so on that way. And I'm here to speak for the Gates Hotel. And actually, just to make a very simple offer, I'm willing to purchase the hotel if we can work out the price and give people time to consider again getting it on the historic register and then getting the contractor who is willing to do the refurbishing and bring it up to whatever is necessary. And I know this is kind of a ninth hour or eleventh hour type of thing, but I actually had not heard about this happening until Gary talked at the Senior Center. And I drove by the building and took a look at it. It was a sleeper. I just hadn't, I wasn't aware of all this going on about it. So this is a late offer, but it's one that I can make, provided that we can come up with a fair price. And that's the offer.
Something else for us to consider, Frank? We don't, we will not be voting on anything this evening. It's just information and discussion.
I don't know what else to say.
Okay, thank you for coming. And Gary, you had registered for information only, so did you have something else you wanted to add?
I'd like to talk a little bit more about the developer agreement that was passed and the process and things like that. Supposedly, the Planning Commission, I haven't seen it back then, but in December, it was added and discussed. It was the first initial time when it was popped up that there was a possibility for demolition. There was discussion, and that was in December. Also in December, I tried to get access to the building. This was before the city council had met, and both with a developer and an architect who was interested in purchasing that building. And we tried to get access to it and weren't able to through city. During this process, also, it came up, to my understanding, I'm not sure the exact date, but it came the first minutes that came out of the Planning Commission. It wasn't in December, it wasn't in January, it was later. Anyway, I can't remember the exact date. But anyway, I looked at that, and that was the first time that it came up. And that's just before that, the Preservation Commission had heard that there was possible demolition going to be proposed on that hotel. So I think that was in, it was the first week in February that it came up, and they did the process on that. And it was voted on at that time, on the 7th of February, I think it was. I'm trying to remember exactly. But anyway, the day after is when the Preservation Commission started to make a move to try and protect this building. So in other words, it hasn't been a long time. There was never any danger prior to that. And then, of course, both the Planning Commission and the city council became aware of the historic significance. So in other words, it came out of the commission, and there was paperwork that was given, and it was what the state had had, and we added to that. And the process, I'm thankful that the state and the federal government moved forward to at least move us up into their quarterly meetings, which they only quarterly per year. to at least move us up into their quarterly meetings, which they only quarterly per year, that they moved it in and put it into a fast track, because they considered this to be an endangered structure also. So they moved forward on this and gave us the letter of determination quite quickly. So I know the city has moved forward in the process and the whole works. To my understanding, the new developer agreement still allows amendments and things like that to be agreed upon. I know the developer was here at the last meeting, and he had mentioned that, yes, it does have an effect on his credits and stuff, but the thing is, it doesn't affect the development. Concern for parking places, I think there's 126% per unit parking place to unit ratio. I think there's 5.6 or 5.8% parking to units at the Commons, and that was passed by the City Council, didn't seem to be a problem. We've had the same thing happen in other developments that had far, far lower than 126, 1.26, I should say, percent parking per unit. So I mean, I understand that you're concerned about parking, but this is far above and beyond anything that's passed in the past. I really think that you should really consider highly the historic significance of the building and what we're losing for a few parking places. Now, we have two people that are interested in purchasing this building directly from the city. This would be a cash flow that would immediately come in. They're interested in restoring it at a high-level restoration through the tax credits, and of course, that's administered at both the state and federal level, being it's commercial, it has to go through both. So it's not just going to be a patch job, it's not going to be a remodel. This would be a restoration, so the city would have something they could be extremely proud of. And also, this I know would be completed in approximately a year, and so we would have a restored building on the tax rolls that would create taxes immediately, would not have to go to paying the TIF. So if you figured right now, it's at $3,044 a year that we're receiving on this building, supposedly from the Bolt Properties, that was the last assessment that the city had received, my consideration is that, well, we figure it's going to be at least $5,000 a year, maybe more, in over 20 years, which is the approximate life of a TIF. We're looking at $100,000 to come back in our coffers, along with no cost to demolition, no cost to remediation of asbestos, no cost for hauling away materials, anything from the structure. So there's a savings there, which you can't really put a price on, you really don't know until it goes down. And they're not going to be putting up parking places for free, so the parking lot itself is going to cost money. So down the line, I'm not against the whole project. I'm against losing the Gates Hotel for no money. The city is getting nothing out of that in that aspect. We're not seeing any taxes coming into the Platteville coffers at all for a number of years. We're borrowing from other TIF zones to finance this, to my understanding, I'm not positive of that, but we've done this in the past. When a TIF zone does not produce, the money comes out from another TIF zone. To my understanding, we've got $1.3 million that we're going to be assisting the developer with. The whole process, I'm really concerned about the money that this is costing the city, and I would really like to see the building saved, produce some money to the city, and still allow the project to move forward. Thank you.
All right. That concludes the request for comments. So unless council members have anything they'd like to add, can you comment?
I'll make a comment. I just want to thank everybody for their concern for the historic building, and I agree, it's a beautiful building. I want to revisit, I just want to lay this out to make sure that there's not misinformation. I want to revisit how the decision process occurred, so that there's more clarity about it. But basically, a couple of key things were asked. Joe, can you talk to us about how the developer came to us a couple months ago, and the initial plan was not to take down the Gates Hotel? The developer said they walked through it, and they came back to us and asked if the city would pay, basically, for all of the cleanup work regarding renovations with the Gates Hotel. And that was part of the conversation we'd had with the developer, basically, at that point, was if the city could pay for all this extra work, the hotel would be saved, was what the developer had proposed. Can you refresh us on how that happened?
The developer's initial proposal was to remodel that building, keep it as apartments. That was his plan when they submitted the proposal, that was the plan as they were working through their draft project development. That changed when they had his architect and contractor go through the building. And after their input, he realized that it was going to cost significantly more to remodel than he had initially anticipated. So he approached the city, you know, as part of our discussion about assistance the city could provide, since we do have a grant to help with some of that work. Unfortunately, the work that he would have liked to have us do on that property is not grant-eligible, so we could not provide any additional assistance.
And he had talked ballpark figures, hadn't he, at that time?
I don't remember the numbers that were thrown out. So basically, at that point, he made a decision to just kind of put that property to the side and focus on the new building, getting that through the approval process and the financing. And then it came to light again at the December Plan Commission meeting, when there were some concerns raised about access to the parking on the site. The only access to that proposed parking lot was from Water Street, which is a very congested portion of Water Street. So there was desire for better access, and then there was a desire for improved parking, more parking for that development. And through that discussion, it led to the recommendation that that building be removed to allow increased parking and better access to Oak Street as well as Water Street.
But the parking wasn't the sole reason, right? As I recall, the parking was a subsidiary topic almost, that the cost of the repairing...
Well, from the developer's standpoint, it was the cost of remodeling that really first became an issue for him.
Right.
And at the Plan Commission level, it was the parking and the access to the property.
So it was a little bit more complicated than just a parking conversation, correct?
Correct, right.
Okay. And then the second thing I would like, if you could update or remind us, I guess, of the process. We did receive $650,000 in grants, that's part of the whole financing package happening here. So the timeline was that we moved ahead with a developer, which would assure us the ability to continue to have those grants. That was part of the grant requirements, is having a developer in place. So as we moved forward with a developer, it was a whole project, it was all these parcels together, and those grant funds were contingent upon us having a developer. So this has been a process that's gone on for a while, knowing that we were working forward with a developer, we continued to secure that grant funding. Now, as that timeline continued forward, we've had questions raised about the project in general with the Gates Hotel. But the timing was that the developer needed to have the specifics of his project put together for the WIDA tax credits by last meeting. Otherwise, he would risk not having access to the tax credits, which would change the financing of their project, which then may not allow the project to happen at all from the developer's perspective. Is that somewhat of a decent summary?
Yes, he had to have an approved zoning for the project, as well as an approved development agreement for the project for his submittal, for the tax credits to WIDA by March 3rd, or previous to March 3rd, the applications were due on March 3rd. The other deadlines that you alluded to were the grants that we have, the CDBG grant. According to that, we're supposed to have the property acquired and the site cleared by June of this year, which is not going to happen, so I've started the process of requesting the extension to that. The site clearance, we also had the $150,000 grant, which was supposed to have that work done by December of last year. So I've already requested, and we received an extension to that grant till November. We should be able to, I don't think we'll have an issue getting the extension to the CDBG grant, but it's clear in both cases, we're limited in our ability to request extensions to that. So I think we'll probably be looking at November as our, we've got to have those projects completed by then, or we're going to lose both grants.
And in requesting those extensions, it's fairly critical that we have a developer lined up, otherwise, we're requesting extensions indefinitely, and that doesn't, funding agencies generally do not like that.
Yeah, and plus, you know, when you have state and federal funds, you know, they have time limits on when they have to expend those funds.
Right.
Or they would lose them. So we're very limited in our ability to go much beyond this fall, as far as use of those grants.
So effectively, we've created a jumble where all these different properties are part of one project that needed to move forward in order to continue with the financing of it.
Correct.
So is there any way we can separate off the Gates Hotel from the rest of the project at this time without compromising the funding for our developer, his tax credits, and the grants that we've been able to get?
From what the developer had said, based on their previous experience with WIDA, that would be difficult to do. They would have to go through some fairly significant hurdles to do that, swap additional properties or provide additional funding into it. They would have to do a like project or better, and even then, it's not guaranteed that they would agree to do that. But that would be a decision WIDA would have to make.
So we'd be taking on a risk of losing the whole project at that point?
Correct, right. From what they described, WIDA likes to have the projects ready to go when they submit it, and they don't like changes after that.
Right, okay. Thank you, Joe, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Any other questions, Ken?
If I could, I'd just like to clarify with respect to project funding. Joe's already referenced some of the funding aspects from the property acquisition and cleanup, where it was roughly $1.1 million or so probably in total cost between acquisition and cleanup, a portion of which is being offset by grants, leaving a net cost to the city of about $526,000 or so dollars. The city will owe that money regardless of the disposition of the Gates property, whether it's included as part of this project or whether it was developed separately. There is also a TIF, a loan to the developer that is part of this project, and that loan will be paid back through guaranteed tax payments. So the loan that is going to the developer does not require any sort of advances from other TIF districts. It will be, the principal of the interest will be completely paid back through guaranteed tax payments from the developer. In addition, those guaranteed tax payments will cover the former taxes that the city gathered from the properties prior to the city's purchase of them, roughly $21,000 or so.
I'm glad that you clarified that as well, because I think we don't want the public to be under the impression that your tax dollars are what are funding this project. That's not the case. It is a loan, and the developer is paying back the loan plus the taxes that were part of that project. All right. Anybody else have anything else?
Well, the development agreement could be amended. That's listed in the agreement, that could be done. So I would like to look at a means of amending it, so that the Gates Hotel could be saved.
So I just wanted to clarify, if we amend the developer agreement, we're compromising the financing for the project. Correct, Joe?
At this point, the agreement could only be amended by mutual agreement of both parties, and the developer is not in a position, I don't believe, to make an amendment until they know they get the tax credits and if they are in a position to discuss the amendment with WIDA.
So when will they learn about the tax credits? You gave the date.
Not an exact date, but they're looking at late April, I believe.
April. Well, the Gates Hotel is a small part of the total land area there, and I can't see why that can't be separated off.
It would be up to me, right?
I mean, we're giving, let's face it, we're giving them a tremendous amount of help. We're giving them $1 million, Ryan, for a dollar. And I realize that about half of that is being paid for by a grant, but still, we're giving them $500,000 at least from the city. The city has to pay for that through means of funding from the different TIFs. And also, we are foregoing, until 2033, we are foregoing any taxes going to the general fund for the city, because those taxes coming from the development, the apartment complex, will go toward paying off the $1.3 million loan. So we're giving them tremendous help. And I can't see where this small part here, separating it off, the Gates Hotel is going to be such a catastrophic event for them. I can't believe that. Now, it makes me think that they're not really submitting good funding to fund the apartment complex. I went through all of their listings as far as the projects they've worked on, things they've given in this proposal dated April 2016. And some of them are much more expensive than Platteville, and there must be much more contribution coming in from other sources other than the cities in which they're built. We seem to be having to pick up a big tab as far as getting this project going.
I think that, Ken, you're not interpreting what I'm hearing the same way I'm hearing it. So I need to defend the city here that we're not necessarily picking up a big tab, it's a loan, and the timing is more the issue here, that I'm trying to understand, it's a timing issue, it's not necessarily what we are not giving the developer, we've already negotiated the terms of the agreement. If we change them now, we're compromising the whole project. That's my concern. So I just want to be clear that it's a timing issue, as far as I understand it. All right.
I think there should be serious consideration of a change in the agreement. We have an offer here to purchase the property, and I think the staff should be looking into this with the developer, so that this can be changed. Yes, Gary's worked on petitions, and other people have.
And that's fine. Gary, this is council time. So, Ken, there's a petition, I understand that, I understand there's a petition that's being circulated.
We've got 294 in the count.
Gary, thank you. Gary, Gary, thank you. Ken, you obviously know about the petition, would you like to tell us about the petition?
No, Gary can talk about those.
This is council discussion time, we've had citizen comment. All right. Anybody else on the council have anything else we'd like to say? All right. I'm then going to go on to the next item, which is 2016 budgeted carry orders. Valerie?
Okay. Departments have requested the following 2016 budget dollars be carried over to 2017. We have some remaining funds from a $12,000 Senior Center grant, and we actually had carried some over into 2016, and they still have not been able to use all those funds, so we're carrying over the remainder into 2017, and the Senior Center expects to have them expended here in the first quarter. $735 from the city clerk budget, which was originally budgeted for training for the new laser fish, and now with the transition of the new staff in the clerk office, that money would be used to train the new staff. And the library outlay is the big one, that those funds were originally budgeted to pay for the move, and with the move now happening in 2017, they're requesting to have those transferred over to add to their outlay budgeted. So this would add a total expense for 2017 of $7,368.07.
Questions, anyone? All right. That concludes our information and discussion. We are going to have a work session this evening on the lead service line replacement grant implementation, and also the 2017... grant implementation and also the 2017 street reconstruction budget. And we will probably move over to the tables over at the end of the room.